All right. Good evening, everyone. Sorry we're a little bit late reconvening our open session. And I'm asking, I will ask our clerk to report actions taken in closed session.
On a six to zero vote with trustee Jay absent, the board in closed session voted to issue a notice of rejection of claim number 629162 pursuant to government code section 913. The governing board further authorizes the vice chancellor of business services or her designee to issue any appropriate notices. The other one is, on a four to two vote with Jay absent, trustee Jay absent, the board took action in closed session to affirm the stipulated disciplinary five days unpaid suspension of an administrator and has authorized the chancellor or designee to take all steps necessary to effect the decision.
Point of order. Are we supposed to read out the people who voted which way when it's not unanimous?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay. The first one was six to zero. The second one, voting yes. Do I just read all of them?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Dak, yes. Trustee Inman, yes. Trustee Jamal, yes. Trustee Milchiker, no. Trustee Prendergast, yes. Trustee Rydel, no.
Thank you for that. We now have the invocation led by trustee Prendergast, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Rydel.
As referenced on more than one occasion by trustee Jamal and myself and others, that all too often when it comes time for our meetings and invocation, some event in the world heightens our focus on the hatred and violence that exists in that world and causes us to take pause and ask why and wonder what can we do? And it's a sense of helplessness to not be able to answer those questions. And so with the events that are happening in Israel, in the Middle East, in general, in Ukraine, in Sudan, and other places that don't get mentioned in the news, I offer a moment of silence.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance to our great flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. I see that we have three requests for public comments. And if you're able to, go into the podium to my left. First, Manuel Espinoza. Second, Carmen Mara, sorry, Hernandez Bravo. And then Beatriz Garcia, I believe. Those are the three public comments we have. You have, oh, reminder, you have two minutes. We knew keep track of the two minutes and we will ask, we will ask you to stop if you exceed two minutes. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Manuel Espinoza and I'm a Spanish instructor. And I'm here to address the board of trustees honoring Latina classified employees. The International Languages Department would like to honor and thanks all the classified employees at our institution for their support to us and to the Latin community at large. We are very proud of each one of you. You are amazing colleagues. Hora District Gray Garcia, district director, chancellor, and board operations. Yuri Perez, program research analyst. Nicola Ortega, research and planning analyst. Raúl Gutiérrez, application specialist. Vanessa Cortés, HR specialist. Virginia Romero, payroll specialist. Senior buyer Angie Gutiérrez. EOPS Lori Parra, extended opportunity program specialist. Thank you Lori for being a champion to many communities, but especially to the Latin and African American communities. Thanks to you Menofa Sart prof, professors today, Menofa Sart professors today. Admission and records, each one of you have been pivotal to our Latin community. Ustedes son magníficas queridas colegas. Elba Araysa, okay, lead admissions and record evaluator. Lead admissions and records evaluator. Ebria Ramírez, admission and record evaluator. Vanessa Miramontes, admission and records evaluator.
Mr. Espinoza, I'm sorry, your time has expired. Thank you.
Giselle Heredia, senior admission specialist. Elsa Chacon, admission and record especially one. Nancy Ayala Castaneda, admission and record. Brian Flores, admission and record. Andrea Medcalf, admission and record. Police department, Bo Arbono, police officer. Bo, you have been a guardian angel to all of us in the international department that taught at night. Janine Jones, city dispatcher. Anna Pulfer, admission administrative assistant. Mer Mirali, police officer. HSS, Ivan Bernardes, HSS officer assistant. Annabella Costa, administrative assistant. Promise Program, Georgina Martínez. Thank you, Georgina, success coach, promise program. IT system specialist. Thank you for helping us with our technology needs and for always helping us in our cultural events. Alberto Araysa, Alan Juan, Gabriel Covian, Jorge Delgado. Instructional support and technology, Mayra Arias. Office of the vice president, Madeline Hernández, executive assistant. Career service technician, Juan de la Cruz. Warehouse, thank you so much for helping us deliver our books, material, and for everything we need for our event. You are the best. Julio Vernachi, Jorge Martínez, Misael Banderas. Ground department, thank you very much for keeping Saddleback so beautiful. The stadium is impeccable, thank to you, as well as all the trees and plants all over the campus. Raúl Leal, José Huerta, Alberto Araysa, Luis Silvia, Rafael Granado. Basic need program, Paola Medina, food resource center. Guillermo Vázquez, program student support specialist.
Sorry, your time has expired. Thank you.
For adult education, Obledia Vázquez, Fabián Prado, Jacqueline Parra, Michelle with the crew, Alondra Hernández. And for technical support assistance is Lucy Luna.
Thank you. Any other requests for public comments? No? All right. Now we're moving on to board reports and I'll start off with trustee Dak.
All right. October was a very, very busy month for me, so I'll probably run out of time here. But first off, I would like to share that I was fortunate enough to attend the Saddleback Foundation Gala on October 6th. Had a great time supporting our foundation at set of gala at the Ritz Carlton. Look forward to attending the Irvine Valley College Foundation Gala in March of 2024. Additionally, I was fortunate enough to attend the ACCT Leadership Congress in Las Vegas from October 9th to October 13th with fellow trustee Inman and our chancellor. I was also happy to join the youth caucus, which is aptly named the Under 45 Caucus. So that was a great time, meeting with my peers. I would also like to share that I went to the Black Chamber of Commerce's annual banquet along with the Coast Community College Welcome Reception honoring an exhibition on school desegregation in California. So it's always nice to show support to our other fellow community colleges here in Orange County. On two final personal notes, I would like to share my celebration honoring and recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. I myself am half Hispanic with my mother's side being from El Paso, Texas. Though I'm sort of biracial, my father is born in Canada. It's always important to remember that not everybody who is from, has a Hispanic background, you know, is exactly what you expect from them, being how they look, act, or speak. So it is great to recognize everyone who is a part of their community and heritage. Additionally, on one final note, I just flew back in from Boston last night and would like to just say for the public record to congratulate my brother who got married to his longtime girlfriend, Leona Foye. So congratulations Tyler Dak and Leona Foye.
Congratulations, trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, so not quite as busy, but on October 2nd, I was excited to get an opportunity to give input and have a discussion, an interview on rebranding and possible new logo for the district. And I thought that was very informative as well as got to give some of my opinions that hopefully we'll get to enact sometime soon. And then on Wednesday of last week, the 18th, attended the Orange County School Board Association Dinner and Meeting. And we had a presentation on a book called Bridge the Gap, Breakthrough Communication Tools to Transform Work Relationships from Challenging to Collaborative. And very good information about how being a more effective leader in general, but she did a really good job of tying it into education and how people working with their first reports can have a, be a more collaborative environment than confrontational or challenging. And so that's my report.
Thank you. Trustee Inman.
It was my pleasure to attend the Black Chamber Gala and the Saddleback College Gala. It's really fun to dress up and make money for student scholarships. I have been attending plays with friends and colleagues to join me, inviting them to join me. A few of us attended No Exit at IVC, which was excellent, thought provoking, and directed by a student. Very impressive. Several of us, as he already said, went to the ACCT Leadership Congress in Las Vegas. And there were trustees from all over the country, which was really fun. One said, how many, at lunch, how many colleges do you have in California? And I said, 116. How many do you have? Eight. So it's really different. I have, the whole idea of it was uplifting students and transforming communities. And my two favorite breakout sessions, that's what they were doing. John Hannah is one of my favorite presenters. And this time, his program was the important role of apprenticeships for employers, workers, and advancing equity. So they are making apprenticeships for groups of people that have never been included in this kind of program. So, and they do it just so incredibly well. Secondly, my former colleagues at Mount SAC, they also uplift students and transform communities. And I've mentioned before that I'm interested in formerly incarcerated students. And their program is so complete and so helpful, it was just really a hopeful kind of thing to listen to. Interestingly, the man in charge, it was incarcerated at one time, and he now has a PhD and directs the program. He also only hires people who have been incarcerated. So the idea that that's for life is just simply not true with help people can do well. Finally, I write an article for our online publication in Irvine, and I wrote one on IVC named best community college in California. My editor wrote me recently and said that article has been amazing, has had amazing engagement. It's been viewed by 43,017 people and it's been shared 581 times on Facebook. So congratulations to the citizens of Irvine for appreciating the college as they should. Thank you.
Thank you. Trust, you can clap. Trustee Rydel.
Okay. October was a busy month, so let me get right into it. I did something different. I attended a Zoom, not that that was different, but it had to do with the cultural month that we had, and it was the Latinx Mexican on culture and nutrition. And I have to tell you, I've never wanted a Zoom not to stop. She was excellent. I think her name was Christine Lenars. She was exceptional and I wish there would have been more people on the Zoom. Okay. She was exceptional, so thank you for putting that together. Also, I attended the Saddleback Homecoming Game. The team was awesome. I attended the annual economic forecast conference at the Disneyland Hotel. It was very interesting, but I want you to know the average cost of a house in Orange County is 1 million point 3. It was also the Saddleback College I went to that same day, the Japan Fest. It was superb, absolutely superb. The speaker made me think quite differently. I mean, we all have an idea of the atomic bomb and what happened, but how she expressed it, I will never be the same because of that. She was absolutely excellent, everyone. I also went to the wall reading and I am very science oriented and the arts have never been under my bag. But we were here, I told my husband, let's go. And I want to tell you, I had read parts of the book, but it was again exceptional. I'm using that word a lot because this campus is exceptional. And I want to thank Professor Gina Victoria Schaefer and Farah Shalom. She was the chief editor and Victoria Gina was the faculty advisor. These students, they were returning students, at least as much as I saw, they were probably in their late twenties or thirties, but they shared what their life experiences were. And I just want to say one thing, a gentleman wanted to be a writer, but he gave up and went into real estate, came to Saddleback. But guess what? He came back again. So I, we, we're a great school and I'm glad he came back. He will make it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, trustees, I know it's hard. Please try to keep to your two minutes. Trustee Milchiker.
Okay. I'll try to provide you with the continuance of the glimpse of the rich tapestry of life at our colleges at so many of the events I was honored to attend this month. The Guided Pathways Assembly at IVC was an initiative chaired by dedicated professor Brandy Idelman. And the Pathways to Success Fair featured 23 booths representing support centers, communities, pathways, and brought together more than 400 students and 70 volunteers. And I was honored to spend the whole time checking in students. The IVC college president Hernandez shared photos of this event and the IVC Walk of Hope and the Mental Health and Suicide Prevention Resource Fair in his board report, and they're worth looking at. I was mesmerized at the partial solar eclipse watching at Saddleback College led by the passionate astronomy club student president Emma Carlson and the science tech Jason Smith. And this demonstrated the awesome power of the universe as we saw the eclipse transpire and the power of sharing knowledge with our students. And the Mars Rover team meets faithfully every Sunday afternoon and more. The Black Chamber of Commerce and the OCBC Economic Forecast were very valuable. The Japan Fest, as was mentioned, was coordinated by Professor Christina Ganipour and assisted by Christina Henkel and was incredible and connected our students to the Japanese culture and artwork. The wall reading guided by Professor Gina Schaefer and editor in chief Farah Shalom was a touching experience that showcased the talents of our students. And the Faculty Association luncheon, Melanie Hayari's exceptional talents were showcased. My husband and I were on our way to the Saddleback College Gala with our tickets in hand when we got a call that we were needed to babysit and to welcome our grandchild number nine, Stella Roque Milchiker, who's half Filipino. So beautiful little baby. But as we cherish these moments, we must always remember October 7th, a day that broke our hearts and shredded our souls. Let our hearts go out to the victims and their families who suffered such senseless act of violence. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
I want to congratulate the Saddleback College staff or foundation staff for the Gala. I trust it was a good financial success as well. It was great to be there. Also at the OCBC Economic Forecast, which doesn't look all that rosy in 2024. I don't know if it'll affect housing prices, but we've got some harder times ahead, I think, mostly in the private sector. And then it's been a tough month for me. I consider you guys family. You know, last month, my wife and daughter were over in Armenia and it was in the news for a while. It's now vanished from the news, but there was a genocide. And to have them see it in person was, it's really difficult. It's very, very challenging, but not as much for us, but for people over there. So if you don't know, 120,000 people were forcibly deported from their ancestral homeland of two millennia by the Azerbaijani government. I've been involved in another parallel life, working on this issue, going to Washington every couple of weeks and trying to do my part with State Department and Congress and others. And it's happened. And I think, you know, what happened on October 7th, there is, there's a lot of hate. There's a lack of US leadership, unfortunately. And all lives matter. I mean, that's, and what we're seeing is that some lives matter. And that's not right. And I think it's, how does that, it will come home to here. It will. The world order is in disarray and because of the US has stepped back. And, but the one thing we need to keep in mind is that I think all lives matter. I had the opportunity to speak for the board of supervisors three days ago on a resolution they passed condemning the genocide of Armenians. My time is up. So I consider you my family. It's really challenging, but just remember that every life matters. What happened in Israel was a result of hate and violence and it just, it has no place. And we have to do our part and try to figure it out. So thank you. Trustee Hiri.
All right. Thank you. Both Saddleback and IVC have been working towards solidifying their outlines for events for the rest of the school year, as both Saddleback and IVC have seen a significant increase in attendance for on-campus activities and at sporting events. I was able to attend Saddleback Associated Student Government's first monthly all ASG Day, in which new members became acquainted with meaning rules and conduct, discussed upcoming events, and organized volunteer opportunities. Both Saddleback and IVC have established a strong group of leaders, and I'm happy to report most positions have been filled at this time. Participation in student leadership across the entire district has been strong and we can look forward to these student leaders working tirelessly to ensure fair representation and advocacy across both schools. Saddleback is currently finalizing projects and advocacy events for the rest of the fall semester. From November to December, Saddleback is, you'll be focusing on creating a fall fair with participation from our new and returning clubs, a wellness week with Paws for Paws during finals week to help with stress, and basic needs oriented activities during the holiday season and throughout winter break. I and Saddleback Senator for Campus Life and Events are working alongside the Care Corner at Saddleback to create a canned food drive through which we will collect meals and resources to best help students during an often difficult time of the year. I'm hoping to mirror this event at IVC as well and work towards increasing awareness and access to these resources during the holiday season. Thank you.
And by the way, I went over my time, but I loved your passage that you wrote in the wall.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Very heartfelt. I actually was going to quote from it maybe later. I think trustee Witt has another comment.
Just a real quick, for the Gala, they raised 108,000 more than last year for likely a total of 375,000 this year. I think that's a lot of work. Thank you to the team who did it. Well, they did. They did it. Thanks.
Okay. Now we're on to ASG and we'll start out with Spring from Saddleback College.
All right. Good evening, everyone. During the last couple of weeks, ASG was able to host several events on campus and we had a successful rate of student engagement. Last week was Undocumented Student Action Week. ASG showed its support for our undocumented student body by having a booth on the main quad where we handed out pizzas and encouraged students to submit their feedback on what are some things that ASG can do to be more inclusive and how we can help create a welcoming environment for undocumented students. Our Honors Student Council hosted a workshop and walked several undocumented students through the application process in order for them to learn how they can join the honors program. On October 31st, which is Halloween, we're hosting a Halloween festival. There's going to be activities such as pumpkin painting and costume contest. On October 14th, we had the Homecoming Football Game. Our inner club council senator spent weeks to organize and coordinate a student section for the Bobcats. This was the first time, first time since the pandemic that we had such energetic student section present at a football game. ASG plans on being more involved with our athletics department. Our student section, or as we call it, the loud crowd, will make appearances at the future sports games such as baseball and basketball games for the spring semester. For the month of November, we currently have the Veterans Appreciation Football Game on November 6th and the Fall Fair on November 8th. Since we are halfway through the semester, the ASG Senate has started brainstorming event ideas for spring semester. Two of the main events that we're currently working on are the Spring Club Rush and the Small Business Fair. Small Business Fair will take place on March 28th. We are organizing this event to show our support for the students who also happen to be small business owners. That's the end of my report. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your report. Now we have Diego Victoria from IVC.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all again. It's definitely been a busy month as well in the month of October. And I know I didn't see you guys last time in September, so apologies for that. It was my birthday. Had to get away for a second. But yeah, so our fall elections had just concluded and we had over 40 candidates for 10 senators spots. And there's a total voter turnout of about 750 students. So we're really happy to see such high engagement from our student body. And with that, we've created a couple of various events. Recently, the Office of Student Equity and Student Life has put on a series of programs acknowledging not only Hispanic Heritage Month, but also the Filipino-American History Month. And from October 16th to October 20th, we hosted the Undocumented Student Action Week to promote awareness and promote these support systems for undocumented NDCA students on campus. And we also, this past weekend, had our Fall Leadership Retreat at the UCLA Lake Arrowhead Center. So it's a really fun time to have leadership exercises and activities as a whole with student government. Now that the student government is fully complete, we have 30 student government members, including myself. And so it's great to have these 10 new senators onboard. We can all collaborate and really get to know each other on a deeper level. And honestly, there aren't any words that I could describe the type of bonding that occurs because everybody's kind of nervous when it's your first time in student government. But when you're at a place surrounded by nature and it's really just yourself away from technology, it really is an enjoyable time. And we are also going to host a Halloween event on campus this week. So we're participating in having pumpkin carving, some candy, but also participating with faculty and staff at the school to have a Halloween door decorating contest, which shout out to ACE, created the idea, but ACE IVC loved to partner with that. So we're really looking forward to the events, but also being aware of the situations that's going on in the world and ACE IVC acknowledging it and showing support for students on campus. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that. Now we'll turn to the IVC Academic Senate. Rebecca Beck.
Thank you. This evening, I wanted to update you on something that I believe that our senate is doing well thanks to the hard work of my colleague Summer Surpass, which I believe some of you met. She was here once representing our senate. Summer has put together an amazing new faculty orientation, and I wanted to highlight how well that's going because it has been a space, early space, we meet on Fridays from 8:00 to 10:00, in which I truly believe the whole community is coming around to welcome and be a to welcome and be a soft landing for our new colleagues. And so I wanted to first and foremost thank her for all her work and also thank our colleagues who are coming, who are coming to share what their programs do, share how, for example, create a super awesome tenure review portfolio, which we invited colleagues who are going through the tenure process now or colleagues who just recently finished the tenure review process. We also have had a theme every month. And so so far, the themes have been the tenure review process and now we're going over participatory governance and what that means. And again, I just want to reiterate that the ethos of having the community effort put forth the energy to welcome our colleagues has been amazing. And so I'm grateful for all the people who have said yes to our invites on a Friday from 8:00 a.m. till 10:00. And yeah, I just wanted to share that. And if, in case any of you, anyone who drop by, just send me an email and we'll welcome you too. Thanks.
Will do. Thank you for that. Okay, Saddleback College Academic Senate, Margot Lovett.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to start by expressing my concern for the innocent civilians of Ukraine, Armenia, Israel, and Gaza who are suffering through wars that they did not start and cannot by themselves end. So I would like to just echo the comments that have already been made. Moving from that, I think that it's apparent from the trustee remarks and from what Spring said that there is an energy and vibrancy at Saddleback this semester that is truly phenomenal. And I think that that will be only exemplified in the spring when we open our new Gateway Building. And I don't know if the trustees have yet had the opportunity to tour the building, but Senate Exec did a couple of weeks ago. And it is a phenomenal building, right? It has state-of-the-art classrooms. It has welcoming spaces for students. It has got comfortable offices for our student services, classified professionals, and faculty. It is a wonderful building. It's got floor-to-ceiling windows. It's got acoustic ceilings. This is an amazing building.
Don't give it all away. We're going on Thursday.
Okay. Well, then look out for all of these things. No, that's totally fine. I hope you will be as impressed with it as we were. It is, it is a remarkable building, so we can all be proud of it. The last thing I'll say is that the academic, the state academic senate's Fall Plenary is coming up in November. It's a time when we discuss issues that are relevant to community colleges throughout the state. And I am looking forward to coming back with an update from that meeting. So that's my report.
Thank you for that.
And I expect an update about what you all thought of the building.
Next board meeting. And now we have, and it's good to see you, Melanie Hiiri from the Faculty Association.
Seriously. Open mic. It's really good to be back. In some ways, it feels like I never left, but I did. And I feel really good and I feel really good to be back. So thank you, everyone. So I'm excited tonight to talk about our part-time faculty who make up, they do more than 48% of the work, the teaching on this campus. And Faculty Association, not like in all districts, represents both our full-time and our part-time faculty. And we honor them and we appreciate all the work that they do. And so in, in that spirit, the Faculty Association hosted a luncheon for the part-time faculty last Friday. And it was appreciation and membership drive and to show them what we do offer because a lot of times, part-time faculty don't, they're in and out and they're in all different places and they don't realize what's offered and how they're supported. And so this is just one other area that they're supported. So we had a lovely lunch and some really fun swag. Not quite the Oscars, but it was pretty good swag. And then we had a couple of cool visitors who had another event on campus, but I think my, the food was, might have been better at our event. I don't know. I'm just saying, they came to our lunch. Thank you, Marsha. It was nice to see you, Terry. Anyway, we honored our part-time faculty and I think we should always remember they do half of, half of the teaching on this, in this district. So in honor of them, I gave my report today. So nice to be back.
Welcome back. It's great to have you. All right, moving on to IVC Classified Senate, ACE.
There you go. Good evening, everyone. I thought we weren't that busy and I wrote my report and now I'm trying to figure out how to fit it all in two minutes. So let's begin. So to further expand our caring campus efforts, our Caring Campus Work Group is now in the process of actually becoming a committee. They are currently assessing the structure to better integrate faculty, administrators, and students into our caring campus efforts on campus. I would also like to personally thank those who contributed to our Classified Senate funds during this year's record-breaking IVC Giving Day, especially my executive board, who actually did a challenge of a one-to-one match for every dollar contributed to our accounts for Classified Senate. Part of our accounts actually is an endowment scholarship, so we're very excited to provide more scholarships for students in the upcoming year. To continue what was started last year by Robert Flurnoy from our Facilities and Maintenance, Beverly Hill and Angela Mahaney are now leading a food drive where we classified professionals provide Thanksgiving meals to students in need. Last year, we were able to provide 40-plus Thanksgiving meals to students and their families. We are now working with our Basic Needs Program and EOP has to identify those students who we can help as we approach the coming holiday. Our Classified Guided Pathways Completion Team is busy finalizing all the details for our upcoming First Gen Celebration, which will be held on Monday, November 6th, where we will have a resource fair, where we will give out swag, food. And something different this year is actually, we invited the Career Center to have a booth where they will actually be offering profile pictures for LinkedIn for students. We are now officially launching our Professional Development Series this November for classified professionals, where Tim Van Norman and Amanda Turner from IT will be holding a luncheon learn on how to leverage AI in the workspace. And lastly, as Diego mentioned, we are partnering with ASIVC to hold a Halloween door decorating contest for departments and programs at IVC. So we're looking forward to that for next week.
Thank you. Now we're at Saddleback College.
Good evening. The Saddleback College Classified Senate is currently entering a second read of our updated bylaws to include a president-elect position to support the succession of presidency, which is so greatly needed in the Classified Senate, which we are really excited about. Thanks to the hard work of my colleagues, the Senate has also been hard at work planning our annual professional development event, which is a joint effort with IVC and is offered to all classified professionals and is held in the spring of 2024. We are currently also planning to host Saddleback College's Second Annual First Generation Celebration for all students on Tuesday, November 7th and Wednesday, November 8th. First gen students and all employees are invited to leave their mark on a community art project in the SSC Quad and share their personal stories and journey as first-generation college student. We are also curating a resource list of support services and programs to support students. And we are looking forward to celebrating all of our amazing students for paving the way in their family as first-generation college students. I also had the opportunity to attend the Library and Learning Resource and Tutoring Center open house last week to support the plethora of resources available for Saddleback College students. And as Margot said, a big shout out to our mascot Blaze and the entire college-wide community for a robust semester of services, support, and events for all students. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Now we have CSCA, Scott Green.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. The end of this month, the beginning of November, the CSA Orange Field Office will be holding a costume and haunted house, open house right there at the Field Office, which is located at 326 Cotella Avenue in Orange. And they're welcoming all members. They're having a retiree reception at the beginning of the event and then they will open it up for everyone to be able to enjoy the festivities of Halloween. I wanted to just mention that very recently, the Cinema TV and Radio Department had a cinema showcase, a Saddleback College Cinema Showcase, that was so popular that we sold out in tickets in record time this year. And part of that is because of our classified employees. I want to personally mention Matthew Brode, Randy Van Dyke, Reema Panin, because they give personal attention to the students that gives them that enthusiasm. And that goes for all of our classified employees across this district. They are in the front lines. They actually are the ones that give personal attention to our students, to give them that type of enthusiasm for learning. And so when it comes down to the particular department of Cinema TV and Radio, which is part of the arts, it's very important that we, and we feel very good that we had that type of enthusiasm for such an event. For, if we spread that around the world, we'll be able to get the new generation, the future generations, to put down a gun and maybe pick up a camera because the only thing that they should be shooting is moving pictures through the lens.
I wish you were right, brother. The world's going another direction. Sorry, but you're doing your part. Okay, so we're now on, I don't think there's a POA wrap here. And Board requests for reports. Public hearings, none. Resolutions, none. 7.1, trustee requests for attending conferences. We need a motion.
So move.
Motion from trustee Milchaker. Second from trustee Witt. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries unanimously, including a student trustee yes vote. 7.2, authorization of payment to a trustee absent from the last board meeting.
So move.
Motion from trustee Milchaker. It's our second from trustee Inman. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 7.3, 2024 ACCT Associate Committee Interest Form. Is this where we're supposed to nominate someone?
Yes, and I believe you can nominate five people because there's five committees. I asked staff to check it out and they called ACCT and they said five of us could run if we each run for a different committee. So I don't know if five people want to run or not, but that's.
Do you want to be nominated?
Okay, okay.
Oh, okay.
Do you want to be nominated?
No.
No, no.
No.
Would anybody else like to be nominated? Okay, trustee, I nominate trustee Inman and I nominate trustee Witt, Riddell?
I was just agreeing with her.
Oh, okay.
For which committee?
Trustee Witt, Riddell, do you like it?
For which committee?
I'd like to be that legislative committee. I think I, I'm going to look it up again, so.
So, I'm sorry.
Trustee Dak or Prendergast, would you like to be nominated?
Here in the committees.
Neither one of them wanted to be nominated.
Okay, I wanted to be legislation, but I'll take communications and committee, or committee education, I think.
Okay.
Okay, so a motion to nominate trustee Inman for the Member Communications and Education Committee.
Let me go back and find that thing. I know I looked at it. Go ahead.
And, sorry, what was the other committee you wanted?
Legislation.
And Advocacy Committee, Public Policy and Advocacy.
That's the one I wanted, but you know, we could discuss it.
Does it have to be one trustee per committee?
One trustee per committee, per board, per board.
I'm sorry?
They get to choose up to three committees.
Oh, okay. All right, you probably don't want to be nominated to the same committee.
No, because there could only be one trustee per board to each committee. But each, each, each board member can run for up to three committees, right? Yeah, he looked into it. I appreciate that.
Do you guys want to talk it out? Who wants to be nominated to legislative? No? Okay.
That's the one I wanted.
Okay. What would you like to do?
I don't know. Let me, let me look at them again. I seem to have, I studied them, but I didn't save the things.
You could make it like open and then we could make that decision.
Yeah, we could decide later.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. Just so you guys know.
I probably won't make it anyway, but you know.
Okay, let's nominate trustee Inman and trustee Milchaker for Member Communications and Education, Public Policy and Advocacy. And that's it?
Okay, great.
Okay. Can I have a second?
Can I second? No, I probably can't second it.
I'll second. Second trustee Dak. Any questions? All right, let's, let's go ahead and vote. Did you guys get that? Yeah, okay. Motion carries unanimously, seven to zero trustee yes vote, student trustee yes vote. 7.4, Board Policy Revision for Approval. Is there a motion?
So move, and I did get all my questions answered about this. Thanks.
Okay, motion trustee Milchaker. Second. Second from trustee Dak. Any questions or key updates from the Board Policy Subcommittee? No, it's all clear. All right. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 7.4, this is for Review and Study, I'm sorry, 7.5, Review and Study, a Board Policy Revision for Review and Study.
I have a question.
Do you want to, clarifying or should we get the motion in?
Yeah, go ahead and do the motion.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion trustee Milchaker.
I second.
Second from trustee Hiri and a question from trustee Prendergast.
So yeah, the first policy, 2735, just curious the reasoning for striking out all that language because I know when it went in, there were definitely issues about it. I'm just curious what prompted the strikeout.
They removed the travel ban for the state and so our policy now reflects that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? This is for Review and Study. I had a question, but it was answered. I can just say what it is. I mean, I had a question on the management personnel and it related to some new language in there that wasn't in there before that I think mandated a step increase for all managers. Is that correct? I just hadn't seen it before in there.
Yeah, it wasn't necessarily mandated, but yeah, it added it to our policy. It's actually been our practice, a longstanding practice that upon successful completion or satisfactory completion of a year, let's say through the performance evaluation, then they would go up a step. And so that's been our practice. It just wasn't reflected in the policy.
Okay, that's sort of a mandate. Or requirement. All right. No other questions? Okay, let's vote. Motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Now on to presentations and I believe we have with us today our newly hired lobbyists from Townsend Public Affairs and I think they're going to be introduced by Letitia.
Yes. Thank you, President Jamal, honorable trustees. My name is Letitia Clark. I serve as the District Chief Communications Officer. So it's my pleasure to introduce to you Casey Elliott, who serves with Townsend Public Affairs. Tonight, he'll be giving you an overview of legislative activity at the state and federal levels and also providing some insight on possible priorities for the Board of Trustees to focus on next year as well as some upcoming and intended activity, legislative activity for next year. So without further ado, happy to introduce Casey.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Casey Elliott, Vice President with Townsend Public Affairs. Happy to be here, glad to be here. Provide a brief overview of state and federal activities. On this, starting out with the state side, the state legislature has adjourned their session for the year. The governor just completed his activity on October 14th, signing and vetoing all of the measures that were approved by the legislature this year. At a very high-level overview, At a very high level overview, the legislature introduced just under twenty seven hundred bills this year, which is a pretty standard bill load, approving just about eleven hundred of those. And then the governor vetoed about fifteen percent of the bills that were sent to his desk, which is very much in line with where he's been kind of on a big picture basis. The legislature will reconvene for the second year of the two-year session on January third. They'll have about a month to take care of bills that were introduced this year that remain in their house of origin before introducing new legislation to consider next year. When we look down a little bit further on the bills that, and ideas that were impacting community colleges most of the state this year, obviously, the state budget, the state spent much of the session this year trying to deal with the state's budget deficit. Tax delays, actually, the tax filing deadline was pushed back another month. So the state is still in the middle of collecting for the current budget year on their revenue, which will impact what goes on into next year. Student housing continued to be a large topic of consideration, not only funding, given the very, as was noted earlier, the high cost of housing. There were shifts within budget trailer bills as to funding at the state level versus the local level, in part of due to the budget deficit. The state did, had made a prior two billion dollar investment in student housing. They are now going to spread that out over a longer period of time and look for assistance from local bonding authorities. So that's an issue that will continue to get revised when the legislature returns in January. Additionally, there was a lot of focus on pathways this year. We did see at the end of session, a U C A D T bill emerged and was signed. It will start in twenty five, twenty six academic year at UCLA, and then expand two years later to five other campuses. The idea bringing all six of those U C campuses to have twelve different A D T programs that would prioritize admission for community college students that complete those programs. That was noticeable, as it's been very difficult to get U C to engage in those conversations over the last several years. So more to come on the implementation of that bill, but we will continue to see focus on moving students, preparing students for community colleges, and then moving them through onto four-year institutions as well as the workforce. And then there was continued focus this year on affordability and basic needs in the terms of getting ready for Cal grant modifications next year, mental health, food subsidies, those items. The district had positions on various bills this year. I'll talk more about the education bond in a little bit, but that bill was held in appropriations this year. The district is supportive of those efforts. There were other additional bills where the district took an opposed position, including legislation that would have provided priority registration for incumbent healthcare workers. The governor did veto, or excuse me, that bill was held in the appropriations committee. The district also opposed legislation related to modification of district hiring practices, and that bill was sent to the governor by the legislature, but was ultimately vetoed over concerns about implementation, local impacts on local collective bargaining agreements that are in place, as well as what that might do to bargaining agreements in the future. Additionally, the district had support positions on A B eleven seventy three by Assemblymember Ta, which is aimed at ensuring that community colleges have a seat at local college and career fairs when their local high schools are talking about opportunities for their students, want to ensure that community colleges are engaged in those conversations. That bill was signed by the governor, as was a bill that modified the college access tax credit, which was not providing significant resources for students. Instead, that's being amended to redirect that funding to help provide additional dollars to students that transfer to H B C U's that have memorandums of understanding with community colleges. Idea is that will likely narrow the number of students that are able to access that funding, but provide more meaningful assistance to those students. As we look ahead on the state level to next year, the state budget will continue to be a driving factor. As I mentioned, not only next year's January budget, which the governor will introduce in the first week of January, but also wrapping up the current year budget. At this point, there are likely budget deficits projected. That was kind of the case as closing on this year's budget. So we will see, probably in a couple of weeks, the Legislative Analyst Office will give their initial fiscal overview, which will provide a better idea of the level of funding deficit or surplus. But at this point, a budget deficit is predicted. Continue to focus on student housing, implementing that, as I noted in this year's budget trailer bill. Housing, student housing funds were prioritized to be used local bond dollars, which is not ideal, and the state recognizes that it's not ideal. So there will be conversation about either a state-level lease revenue bond or some other funding mechanism, which will be helpful, particularly on the community college side of things. Obviously, as we look forward to next year's budget, ensuring that the district's basic aid status, as well as adequate funding for the district and the students is preserved, that will be a very high priority. And then also working with the district and the colleges to take advantage of any opportunity for district-specific funding requests, better known as earmarks. That is something that we have seen at the state level, and it continues to be very political. But if there were a significant number of earmarks in this year's state budget, and given the fact that there was a thirty billion dollar projected budget deficit at the beginning of the year, it seems likely if there was earmarks this year that it's likely going to be a continuing trend. So obviously, want to make sure that the district is in a position to take advantage of that as much as possible. As I mentioned earlier, there was an education bond, Assembly Bill two forty seven, as well as S B twenty eight, a companion measure. Those bills did not advance out of the legislature this year, though that's not for lack of support. There is support with the legislature for an education bond, as well as from the administration. At this point, everyone is eyeing the November ballot for that measure, which means the legislature has until approximately the end of June of next year to pass a measure. The current bills are standard about fourteen billion between K through twelve, as well as the three segments of higher education. Ultimate funding level for those bonds will be determined through negotiations with the administration. There are other bonds that the legislature and administration are contemplating for the November twenty twenty four ballot. So education, the overall spending level, will need to work in concert with those other efforts. Either way, the priority definitely remains ensuring that there's funding available for community colleges, for capital outlay, as well as other workforce and other programs, which currently exist in there. And then lastly, as we look forward, policy considerations. We have new leadership. There was a new speaker elected in the Assembly this year. He will have full committee control next year. So how that will impact policy decisions remains to be seen. Additionally, on the Senate side, there will be a new pro tem being sworn in in the early beginning of next year. Senator Mike McGuire out of Northern California will be taking over both Speaker Rivas and pro tem designate. McGuire have the ability to change up committee membership, chairs, vice chairs, so that will have significant impact on policy being reviewed. As it currently stands, Senator Newman, Josh Newman, as well as Assemblymember Tree Ta, both representing Orange County. Senator Newman is the chair of the Senate Education Committee. Mr. Ta is the vice chair of the Assembly Higher Education Committee. So we have local representatives that are highly engaged in wanting to advance community college legislation and policy that's beneficial to higher education. So continuing to work with them, collaborate with them. I know with Letitia, we're working to set up meetings here while they're in district during interim to really kind of re-solidify those relationships, continue to expand on priorities, and set a path forward for next year, so that they can work in partnership with the district. And then also with the rest of the delegation, wanting to ensure that they are up to speed on the district's priorities, funding and policy. So those conversations we'll be engaging in over the interim and as they return for next session. I would like to note, as we move into next session in Sacramento, our office is across the street from the Capitol, and if anyone finds themselves in Sacramento for any reason wanting to do meetings, you're in town for league conferences, other things, please, please let me know. Would love to set up meetings, would love to engage or just give you a spot to have a quiet room. So please, just let me know. As it relates to suggested legislative priorities, in addition to the three items on the state legislative priorities for twenty twenty three, there is the recommendation for two additional items at the bottom in italics, supporting efforts to streamline and guarantee transfer to four-year institutions, as that continues to be a focus of the legislature, as we've seen over the last several years, their efforts to streamline transfer and move through. That's obviously a very complicated process. We want to make sure that the district and its students are well represented in those conversations. Additionally, sustainability and environmental stewardship would continue to be key focuses that are really working their way into every aspect of state legislation. So that's also recommended here. As we move over to the federal side of the House, there are issues, a lot of issues impacting community colleges at the federal level. First and foremost, appropriations and programmatic funding. Currently, right now, Congress has a continuing resolution to fund the federal government at existing prior-year budget levels through mid-November. The House has passed ten of their twelve appropriations bills. The Senate has passed all twelve of their appropriations bills. That conversation remains on pause as the leadership issues work themselves out in the House. There will need to be some level of action prior to November seventeenth, or else we would be, this government would be looking at a federal shutdown, which would impact, obviously, any number of agencies, including the Department of Education and others. So that is, that's where Congress is at on appropriations. Student debt relief, FAFSA implementation. The Biden administration continues to work to provide student debt relief and implement that. FAFSA implementation continues to move forward. One of the things that could be hampered by a potential government shutdown, but new forms are set to be rolling out in December. Additionally, there's other rules that are going into effect, so assuring that students are aware of the new form changes and what's going on, as well as that colleges are alerted to and aware of their new responsibilities moving forward, so that continues to go. Pell grant reform continues to be a topic of interest on both sides of the aisle. Both workforce Pell, as well as increasing the overall levels of Pell grants to better match the true costs of education, continue to be a conversation. The workforce Pell seems to be somewhere closer to an agreement than the overall increase in Pell amount. But like I said, there appears to be momentum on both sides of the aisle. That said, this year, given the issues in the House, it's unlikely that that legislation will be moving forward this calendar year, so that's something we'd be looking forward to next year. And then was, as was noted earlier with the undocumented Student Action Week, lots of focus on DACA students, recent court cases, and how they're impacted. Obviously, continued court cases likely to come, which will impact that program. But so that, at this point, that does not appear to be something that is going to be a congressionally legislated item that's still likely going to be working its way through the courts for a while. In addition to the legislative items that are moving on, there are still funding opportunities available. Don't want to make it sound like everything is doom and gloom over at the federal government level. This is just a sampling of various funding opportunities that are coming up in the near term. Many of these are ongoing annual programs, while there are other funding streams that are still coming out from the I I J A and recently approved COVID-era funding programs. We continue to work with the district to make sure you're notified and colleges are notified as to those upcoming funding opportunities. Additionally, while I just mentioned the needing to wrap up the budget year and appropriations bills, not too soon to start looking forward to the congressionally-directed spending process of next year. That I know the district and the colleges have been successful in that process previously. Want to continue that going. That will work on a calendar, so we would anticipate on the normal schedule of things for kind of at the end of Q one, beginning of Q two, for House members and the senators to open up their requests. Obviously, we would want to work beforehand to meet with those offices, get an idea of what types of projects they're looking for, what types of funding they may be willing to do, given that not all of the district's representatives will engage in that process. Want to make sure that we're targeting the best projects and trying to pair them with the members that have most interest in those areas. Looking forward, not to, don't want to repeat myself, so federal budget will continue to be an area. Other policy focuses, and again, these are likely going to be issues that are going to push forward to next year. Higher education, reauthorization. Representative Fox, Chair of the Education Subcommittee, continues to make this a priority. Obviously, there's various different ideas between the Democrats and Republicans on how to get that done. There may be a possibility that we see bills put forward this year introduced to kind of provide an opening salvo of where negotiations might go to. But again, that will try to be an opportunity where the two sides might be able to reach some compromise next year. Similarly, with the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, this is funding that's kind of declined over years without significant renewal. Lots of interest from both, members of both sides of the House to try to get something done there. We'll just need to see if that can happen. And then lastly, on the policy considerations, everything that we look at next year is going to be in kind of this, done in this divided government type of atmosphere. With the control of Republicans in the House being so slim, Democrats in the Senate being the same thing, going into a presidential election year, it's going to be very difficult to have the two sides come to agreement on issues of controversy, hence why there may be some opportunities for items where there is some agreement to move forward. But the entirety of next year will be, continue to be very political, to say the least. Similarly, as I offered with our state, we are out in D C. We have an office, so if you guys are out for A C C T, other items, please let us know. We'd happy to schedule meetings, coordinate meetings, attend, or again, just provide you a nice space to, you know, hang out and get some work done. And then lastly, as we look at suggested legislative priorities for the next year, in addition to the top five items, which were part of the district's twenty twenty three legislative priorities, do suggest the inclusion of supporting the Pell grant modifications to reflect that total cost of education. As was noted earlier, significant housing costs, other costs related to food, books. Really, the Pell has not been adequately adjusted to reflect that. There continues to be a lot of momentum amongst various stakeholders to try to get something done. So we do anticipate that to be a continued conversation next year. And so with that, I am happy to answer any questions on any of these or any other items. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Casey. Any questions?
I just have.
Trustee Milchiker.
Two quick questions. Did you say that the education bond for California would probably be on the November twenty twenty four ballot?
Correct. That's the current thinking, yes.
Okay.
I should note, it is, next week it will be too late for March. So it's effectively too late for the March primary, so November would be the next opportunity for legislature to put it on a ballot.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think that's it.
Anyone else have questions? I had a few. So I know you mentioned student housing as a big issue. And I'm wondering, I don't know who this is directed for, so how, whether it's Anne Marie or college presidents or chancellor or you, what is going on with our student housing initiatives here? And how is it connecting to our new lobbyists?
Glad you're asking. And so we are preparing an entire study session for the board, as you know. And so we recently reviewed some initial options moving forward for funding. And so right now, as we know, just going back to the application, so we still have I V C's construction grant application in the queue. We won't find out, though, till I think late spring about the outcome. Is it July? So early summer, so we really won't find out about that. But we will be exploring different funding options, and so we're going to have.
Will Townsend be involved with that at all in terms of our Sacramento?
They'll be involved in the realm of advocacy.
We should all work together on that, actually.
Okay, question on, a couple of questions. So on, I know you're not in the federal side, but my understanding, so Young Kim represents Saddleback, and Katie Porter represents Irvine. Katie Porter does not do earmarks.
Correct.
So I don't know what the I V C strategy will be on that. And but Young Kim, I think, does, correct?
She probably does.
She has, she has in the past, yes. Also, the two senators, Senator Padilla and Senator Butler, both engage, well, presumably Senator Butler will be engaging in the process, so there are some.
Doesn't have a long tenure. Yeah. Do you want to say something, John?
We have received appropriations through Senator Padilla and formerly from Senator Feinstein. So we've gone the state senate route, knowing that our local representative in the House does not support those.
Okay. Last thing, I will be in Washington. Last thing, I, I will be in Washington next week, so I don't know if, if I'll have a lot of time, but maybe we can hook up with, with Joseph.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? No? Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Now we have another presentation, our Career Education Board Report.
Good evening, President Jamal, Board of Trustees and Chancellor Barnes. My name is Tran Vokumoto, Vice President for Instruction at Saddleback College. Tonight, my colleague Rick Miranda, VPI at IVC, and I are going to be sharing with you an update on our career education program. So I'll start off first on Saddleback's program. And just to provide you with some level of context, at Saddleback, we have 34 career ed program areas, and in those areas, we actually have 180 degrees and certificates. Our career ed programs make up 33.5% of our credit FTES and 32% of our program awards. So it is a big part of what we do here at Saddleback in supporting the local economy and workforce needs. So just to share with you how we went about doing our analysis for this report, you'll notice that we identified area, program areas with positive demand, and to determine what positive demand is, it's cases where we have more completers, no, more job needs than completers, and then we also have areas where we're seeing that the labor demand is increasing. With regards to our program success definition, what we did was we looked at across all of our degrees and certificates, and we determined if that program area had 40% of their degrees and certificates with 10 or more completers, it was determined that it has positive success. And our report for you goes into a more thorough description of all of our program areas, our salary ranges, and career growth opportunities, so if you can refer to that for more detailed information about each of our program areas. I'll briefly go over our program areas with positive demand and success. So as you can see, here is a list of all of our program areas that are meeting both criterias. And just to note, you'll notice that Culinary Arts and Hospitality moved into this category over the last three years because they've increased their numbers of completions. And then also to highlight our music production program, the reason why I wanted to highlight this program specifically is that it's actually increased their completions over the last three years, especially under COVID. What we found is we were able to reach more students and get them to completion with the programming being online. And so we, this is one area where we're continuing to do online for the students. Our next area of programs are, are program areas where we either have positive demand or positive success. And in this particular set of program areas, I want to highlighted the bold, highlight the bolded ones. Those are program areas where we found that there are low LMI, so low market demand, and, but our students are really interested in it. And so in these areas, what we've done is we've evaluated whether or not the program would be better serving the students if they were moving to non-credit. And so we've actually attempted to, we've worked with our faculty in the area and have worked on moving some of our programs over to non-credit. To highlight, we've created a non-credit home provider program for our child development area. We've moved our cosmetology program entirely over to non-credit as of this fall. And then we are working on EMT, as well as medical assisting, to move them into non-credit. Our hope is that that would provide our students access to the programs for free, and it provide them with an entry point into other career pathways that are in our credit. You'll also notice here that we're highlighting aging studies. In the past, our aging studies program has struggled with both meeting the LMI, as well as the success metric, and over the last three years, they've actually increased their success, and so we wanted to highlight the program as well. These are some areas in which we are working on to support our programs. You'll notice that, given the chance, state chancellor's focus on our dual enrollment program and pathways to higher ed, we are working on strengthening our dual enrollment efforts at our local K-12s. The other thing we're working on as an instructional team is we're looking at streamlining, streamlining our scheduling and creating, creative scheduling for folks who are working. We're investigating ideas like doing two courses every eight weeks, so we're currently evaluating that to see if that's a positive way of providing classes to our students who are working. The other things that we're doing is we're looking at upgrading our equipment and curriculum alignment with industry standards. Unique thing that we focus on also is looking for externships so that our career area faculty for professional development are able to go out and, and work in the industry, or shadow during the summers to keep up with industry trends and changes. We're also looking at marketing strategies to try and connect our students and create awareness to our programs. And the last part is in working in conjunction with our academic senate, we are working to review our programs that are up for program vitality. So when we go through this process of assessing how well our programs are doing, we usually end up with a few that we have to reconsider and think about what we want to do with them. And so with our senate, we are reviewing our family and consumer science program right now. We are also looking at our coaching program, and then we do have some programs that we are going, some degrees and certificates that we are looking at discontinuing, and those are in our medical coding specialist, athletic training, and retail management. So as part of this process, we review and see what works and what doesn't work, what serves our community, both students and the workforce, and make adjustments as needed. And these are just so that you have a little bit more information about our approach with our dual enrollment efforts. You'll notice there that we are preparing for our move for the automotive program going to ATEP, and you'll see our connections with Irvine USD, and then we're also starting to work with our Testin USD as well, for the two programs that are going out to Testin. So I'll hand it off to Rick.
Thank you for that.
Can I just read your notes? Thank you. Here's some similar, similarities here in the approach. What you are starting with here and seeing is a statement about the future of career education is bright. If you have recently seen the Vision 2030 from the chancellor's office, from Newsen's roadmap to Chancellor Sonia Christian, the future is bright. So adult education, career education, and much more is within that, so that's what we are focusing on at IVC. Similarly, I start with the program areas with positive demand and success. You can see many here, biotechnology, accounting, tax studies, and more, with nine programs, and then another 15 below with program areas with positive demand or success. We have 24 programs, and hopefully, as I get into a little later, some other burgeoning programs as we move forward. Now, I start with accounting as an example. Many of you are aware of our gap four, our accounting gap four plus program that has been phenomenal for our students, working through not only us, but to transfer to Cal State Fullerton, and for many of them, internships in many firms, and we continue to, our faculties continue to stay in contact with these individuals. So you see here that accounting, as we mentioned earlier, as you seen earlier, has all the three attributes that meet. We have a positive market demand, we have completers, and we also have, is it blurry on yours? I'm sorry. So we have all three. So for accounting, we see here that they are doing well. What you also see below is some of the degrees and certificates that we offer at IVC under accounting. Many are stacked degrees. If you're unfamiliar with stacked degrees, our students can take three or four classes within the discipline and earn a certificate, and for often, often allows them to enter the job market sooner, and then continue on in their academic programming for an AA, so it stacks up so they don't lose any time by having to repeat anything. So you see that here under accounting, many of their programs. Also, under business management, you can see certificates and degrees awarded. Now, if you've had the opportunity, or I hope you have the opportunity in the near future, to see the report, the full report under both of these in the appendix also looks at number of completers, the job market demand in the area, the average income based on certificates, AAs, and completions of a four-year as well, and also the demand at our campus, at IVC's campus, and the number of students who are declared with academic plans in that major as well. So there's more information in there if you have an opportunity to look at it. Now, you saw two that fall under maybe a little bit more of the business realm, but we thought I'd highlight also our science realm for the biotechnology. You can see here as well as doing, it is doing well. And then digital media arts. Now, the red X, it's a little harsh to see sometimes, a red X, but the red X really is talking about the completers. Now, these completers are really in a process, well, I'm sorry, these programs are in the process of going through a revitalization and growth. There is policy, yes, that is a program discontinuance and vitality, but at IVC, we're talking about revitalization and growth for these programs, and in doing so, meeting with the faculty to ascertain what they need. Now, what we've seen is a mission statement, strategic plan, that align ourselves with a commitment towards workforce and career training. And yes, historically, we know that IVC has had a large emphasis on transfer to a four-year. There's an "and" statement, and now we are trying to go through a transformation in career education. So that is the, the takeaway approach. How do we do this? How do we continue to work with our faculty? Last year, my first year on campus, I had the opportunity to meet with all CE program faculty leads and chairs, spent time meeting with each one individually, hearing their challenges, understanding what they need, and what you see here, these bullets are just some of the highlight topics. They're looking for increased support from administration through a Director of Workforce and Economic Development, who has been added to our team. Increased marketing, our marketing demands now, some of you have been following our social media and other marketing, have increased the marketing towards CE as well. Labor market data, we have lightcast data. We also are working with the Orange County Regional Consortium and our own internal research and planning to provide more and more data for our faculty. And time, time is often important to our faculty. There's so many, so many hours in the day, as we all know, and I jokingly said, well, between three and four in the morning, you can be working on some of your CE. So the way we do this, though, is we have to give them time back, and time back in their, it is afforded to them through the supplemental duties that is within the contract they're allowed to ascertain, and we have been receiving proposals from the faculty on how they're going to have measured outcomes to help increase their success numbers, and so we are giving them that time through using portions of their collective bargaining agreement, so supplemental duties. Also, collaboration with, with the faculty and academic senate, I have to thank Senate Vice President Rebecca Beck. She will be, has met, and will continue to meet with our Director of Workforce and Economic Development, to invite her to the academic senate meetings to explore future programs that could be at IVC. This is a new approach for some, to think about the faculty themselves choosing the programs at IVC, but that is the direction we want to take to, to have this collegial buy-in, to find a direction that we're all going to come together synergistically to support. And then lastly, we wanted to share a little bit of our CE programming that we see with our high schools for our CE dual enrollment pathways. Irvine Unified, Laguna Beach Unified, Testin Unified. You can see many of the programs on the far right side. We have biotechnology, our business, biotech, computer information, and the list goes on and on. There is some repeat, but the repeats are because they are in different schools. So this is just a brief overview of the revitalization and growth and transformation at IVC. Thank you.
Thank you both. Any questions for Rick or Tran? Trustee Prendergast.
So you both, and we're already on the slide, you both have mentioned dual enrollment for CE. How does this work? Like, you coordinate, or is it conflict with some of the ROP programs that have already been in the, the high schools for many years, especially on things like automotive and culinary arts? Because I know, like, where I work, we don't have those, and so any students that are interested in them, they have to go out to ROP to do it. And some of them say it's not easy because of where the location is, and this, and the other. So are you coordinating with them, or is this just going to be, hey, do ours or do theirs?
We actually have a long history. Our Economic Workforce Advancement Team works very closely with our ROP programs. We do that in several ways. For example, here in Capital Unified, we work with CCA, and what we do is we look at what programs they have and the courses that they start off with. They inevitably do not go all the way through the entire program for students in their ROP area, and so what we'll do is we'll articulate the beginning courses and work with them to then direct the students to the courses after that, so that the students can complete their degree. And we actually have a really good record of articulation with those ROP areas across the region.
All right. Any other questions? Trustee Inman.
This is just one. For Saddleback, I'm a little bit unclear why these programs are moving to non-credit. What good does that do, and what are the pros and cons?
Yeah. A lot of the programs, when we looked at them, they prepared students into jobs that we felt were just entry level and not necessarily living wage, and so part of moving them into non-credit was we would be able to get the students through the program in a more flexible, because non-credit is just around hours completion, and then also not have to, they wouldn't have any costs to it. So for example, our CNA program is in our non-credit, and so we're able to get the students through the program and potentially in a job, and then help them to move into our credit program to continue on with their health career. And so it's a starting point. Our cosmetology program has been a very popular program. It is not connected to a term. It's created as an hours completion program, and so for that one, we actually ran into some challenges with financial aid. And so putting it into non-credit helped us so that we didn't have to worry about financial aid for students because the program would be free, and then along with that, it's around hours completion, and so it tied much better to the non-credit programming.
Can I add one thing to that real quickly, Trustee Inman? So moving things to non-credit also creates a very nice bridge, as we call it, for adult ed students. So English language learners can move into a CTE program directly, without the fear of having to accomplish certain grades, and without having the sudden burden of having to pay fees when they were not before. So it's a nice transition into what we hope will be down the road, credit programs.
Is there a significant problem with paying teachers but not having income, or is that pretty minimal?
For our teachers?
The instructors are still paid at, under the instructor, the faculty contract.
Yeah.
But there's no income coming in? But there's no income coming in for their courses, so that's?
Oh, we do actually.
Yeah, we manage that through other funds. So there's other, there's other parts of our allocation that cover that. And we're able to make sure that no, nothing about the income of the faculty is impacted by virtue of a student not paying fees.
And actually, our funding model allows for any career development or college prep program to be funded at a higher level, which almost matches our credit level apportionment. It actually is a little bit higher to allow for the completion piece.
Thank you.
Trustee Milchker.
Two, two quick questions. I thought it was fascinating to read the program about the labor market demand and the completion and success. You know, some of it was surprising, but I'm just looking at one program, and it's called Child Development and Education. And it's a very low labor market demand, but there's a great completion and success. So are these students getting jobs? Because if they're not, maybe we have to look into these programs like that. And they also, are both colleges moving some of the programs to non-credit as well?
So I'll start with the second portion. So the, as I mentioned earlier, the historical four-year transfer approach, IVC has not had as many CE programming to consider moving over. Our program has been a little bit different. But as a matter of fact, just today, I had the opportunity with a meeting with a faculty who is considering creating new programming, starting with adult ed or non-credit from the beginning. So it may not always be a move, but there is opportunities to start there and create, as we heard a moment ago, create that pathway forward and see what the needs are that maybe could go to credit.
I had an opportunity to visit your adult ed area at IVC, and it was very exciting, so go ahead. Thanks.
Trustee Milchker, if I can add, IVC did recently, our faculty and C I M, Computer Information Management, collaborated with our E S L faculty in writing the first certificate for non-credit. And we hope that that will be the first of many more certificates. And also, just to point out, these non-credit programs often, particularly for English second language learners, it does create on-ramps to other credit programs. And so we certainly want to get in, in the queue, if you will, to continue to promote this for adult learners.
Yeah, actually, to help, to help these students that are struggling financially in a lot of different ways to get jobs. That's what we want to do. We want to help students get jobs and move up in higher education, so that sounds good. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Maybe you mentioned it. When is the automotive tech moving over to Tustin?
Spring '25.
Spring '25. Okay.
I noticed you're still having the automotive program at Capistrano Unified as well, so I guess it'll be?
We do. We, we hope to continue our connections with the Capital Unified School District Programs in culinary and automotive as an entry point for our students here down in South County.
Okay, absolutely.
All right. Thank you both. Appreciate it very much. Deserved a clap. I agree. All right. 9.1, approval of consent calendar items. Are there any pulls from the trustees?
It's just a clarification.
Turn your mic off.
9.7 is just a clarification I want to ask.
Okay, pulling 9.7. Anything else? Do you want to move the balance of the items?
I so moved.
Motion, Trustee Witt, second from Trustee Inman on the balance. Let's go ahead and vote. Balance of the items are approved on a seven to zero trustee yes vote, student trustee yes vote. 9.7, trustee Rydell.
Yes, I would just like to have information. I'm sure it's coming. It's student out-of-state travel for the Geology 6D field study for the National Parks and Monuments, which I think is wonderful.
Sounds great, actually.
If somebody's just looking at this, of course, fee for $15.80, yeah, I'll go. Where's the rest?
My understanding is the $15.80 is what covers the campground fees.
Which is the Grand Canyon.
But I just thought there would be more information for us to review. All it is, is the action, is it coming, or?
Would you know?
I'm sure it is.
I guess I'm not familiar offhand if these requests, when they come in, have backup documentation. I know it typically is submitted, but I'm not sure what makes it to the docket.
Maybe you can provide her that information.
Yeah, next time we have plenty of time. It's just that I'm more sensitive to it now more than ever, so, yeah.
Be happy to.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. Do you want to move the item now?
Yes, I saw a move that we move 9.7, student out-of-state travel.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Trustee Milchker. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We're on to 10.1, 10 point, 10, Business Services. So 10.1, Fleet Carports Project at IVC. Is there a motion? Motion, trustee Rydell.
Second.
Second from trustee Milchker. Any questions? Seeing none, let's vote on the item. Motion carries unanimously with a student trustee yes vote. 10.2, Amendments to Agreements with Illusion Company, Robert Forelli, regarding, I think, the ERP.
Correct banner.
Okay.
Move approval.
Motion, trustee Milchker. Is there a second? Second from trustee Rydell. Any questions? Nope, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries unanimously, seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. All right, there are, we're now on to Human Resources. 11.1, Academic Employees, Academic Classified Administrator Manager Personnel Actions Ratifications. Any changes?
No changes, thank you.
All right.
I'll move approval, and after a second, I'll say something, okay?
All right, motion, trustee Milchker. Is there a second?
Second.
I think trustee Dak, right? Trustee Dak seconded, trustee Milchker.
I just wanted to say, in reading the agenda last, this weekend, I noticed that Tony Huntley, a longtime biology instructor, is retiring. He's served the district for 32 years and four months. I know him as a Renaissance man, a fellow biology teacher, an artist. He's a ceramics, does beautiful ceramics, and he saved so many of the science items from the old Saddleback College Science Building and moved them into the new science building. So he will be missed. He does a lot. And he had my job of science advisor to the Mars Rover team before I had it.
Okay, do you want to say something?
I also, I also wanted to congratulate Renee.
She's the next one. She's in.
Oh, am I ahead?
No, you're fine.
Okay, at any rate, she's been a custodian here for 28 years some. And I remember when I retired, I knew I was going to miss her. Just a bubbly, beautiful smile, like the clothes she wore. She, she was just, she's, she's really a phenomenal person, so I just wanted to let her know she's going to be missed.
Yeah, I, I, she's a classified employee, so she's actually in the next item. But I'll mention the two classified items that are people that are?
Why don't we, wait. Yeah, let's, let's vote on this. We're going to, you can talk in a second.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, but, okay, okay.
Motion carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote, one abstention, and that's from the student trustee. All right, now we're on to 11.2, Classified Personnel Actions and Ratifications.
Okay, move approval.
Wait, one second.
No changes.
No changes. Motion, trustee Milchker, second.
I moved approval.
Trustee Dak, and I think you have a comment.
Yeah, I too want to mention Renee Baronbaum, who also is retiring. She's just, she's been a custodian at Saddleback College for 28 years. I often see her in the ladies' room cleaning, and she's always bubbly and always happy. And she's always just, she makes you feel good when you talk to her, so we'll miss her a lot, too. And also, there's another employee that's retiring, and for Fitzgerald, that's actually worked for the police department at IVC for over 11 years. So, so we'll really miss both of them very much, so thanks.
Thank you for noting that. All right, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries unanimously with one abstention. We're now on to Educational Technology Services, no items under Ed Tech. Moving on to Information Items, Staff Response to Public Comments from the Previous Board Meeting, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College Speakers, Updated Authorized Signature List of Chancellors Designies to Approve Documents and Contracts. Should we know anything about this?
Just we have to delegate authority.
Okay, all right. Monthly Financial Status Report. OPEB Trust Fund. District Initial Proposal to the P O A, P O A Initial Proposal to the District. We'll now move on to the reports from the administrative leadership, starting with our chancellor.
Great. Hi, everyone. Nice to see you. So I also want to do a shout-out to our Latinx and Philippinex communities, because we just celebrated Latinx Heritage Month, and we are currently celebrating Philippinex History Month. So being both Mexican, Filipino, myself, I'm like, this is my month. And so anyways, I just really do want to celebrate the historic and ongoing contributions that both communities have provided, so recognizing that. I also want to recognize how we value equitable access and success in two different ways. One, through enrollment. So for those of you who have been tracking our enrollment reports, our district is doing fantastic, and I think we're well on our way to enrollment recovery. As of today, we are up about 14.74% over last year in our F T E S. Saddleback College, 11.8%, and Irvine Valley College, 19.3%. So that's pretty phenomenal, and we're almost where we were at the pre-pandemic level. So that speaks to the way in which we are providing access and serving our community, so it's a great marker there. So I wanted to thank everyone for all your continued efforts. And then the second way I want to talk about it, the way we value equitable access and success is through food and addressing our students' food and housing insecurities. And so each of our trustees got one of these new statewide reports, Affordability Food and Housing Access Task Force Report. And I do want to recognize our very own President Hernandez is on that task force. So it's a pretty phenomenal report, so I hope you spend some time reading it. And I also want to recognize both colleges for the work that they're doing to support students' basic needs. So the way that, you know, the report really illuminates, it really illuminates the fact that this problem is more pervasive than what we really realize. And so the fact that our colleges have measures in place to provide support for students who have these needs is phenomenal, and it really helps to contribute to our students' success. So I wanted to acknowledge that. And then last but not least, I want to thank our Classified Senate Presidents. I had the opportunity to meet with each of them separately and had some really great quality time to get to know each of you and to better understand the priorities of our classified professionals at each of our colleges. And so we are very grateful, I'm very grateful, to have you leading, leading the charge moving forward and very excited to be able to continue to work with you throughout the year. So thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Chancellor Barnes, IVC President Hernandez.
Thank you, Board President Jamal. I wanted to extend congratulations to one of IVC's alum, Advieth Thampi, who we nominated for the Statewide Community College League of California Distinguished Alumni. I know it's a very, it's a very competitive award. He will be recognized at the league's conference coming up in November, and we're very proud of him. He joined the Marine Corps right after his graduation in 2005, and he served as a fixed-wing crew chief on C-130s from 2005 to 2010. And he excelled at aircraft operation maintenance and flying missions for Operation Iraqi Freedom and Operation Endearing Freedom. He came to IVC like many veterans, found a home at IVC, particularly in our Veterans Services Center as they, as he reintegrated into civilian life. And then he graduated from IVC with an A in History, went on to UCI to pursue a bachelor's in political science and received his J D from Chapman. He worked for the American Legion as a veteran's legislative advocate, and then continued, and where he currently is employed, for the Iraq and Afghanistan Veterans of America, where he's legislative counsel. He's maintained his strong ties to IVC, and we're very proud of him. And then lastly, we also received notification that our outdoor learning classrooms just received distinction in receiving an Award of Merit in the Professional Designs Award Program, and they will be recognized in November in Sacramento. And just congratulations to both district facilities and IVC's facilities for the design and just what a wonderful outdoor space that's become. Thank you.
Thank you. Saddleback College President Stern.
I too want to congratulate the Saddleback Foundation for a banner gala. It takes a lot to produce that event, and this year, we did indeed beat last year's record take by over $100,000 to over $372,000, approaching $375. In particular, I want to mention that the top three donors to that event this year all have very interesting relationships to our college. The very top donor is one of the leading employers of our students. That is the Mock Berries from Fu Tech, so not just supporting our college, but believing in the quality of our grads. And numbers two and three, number three being a relatively new donor to the college, have their actual sons and daughters at our college. And I can't think of any better way to show support for your college, for our college, but to show that you believe in the college, that it's good enough for your own kids. We're very proud of that and very proud of the work that the foundation did in bringing those folks and those contributions forward. I want to add a little bit to the harras and congratulations for Tony Huntley and Renee Baronbaum. So Tony, as you may not know, is responsible as the Chair of the Sabbatical Committee to bring forth only the highest-quality proposals to you. And this is the first college I've worked at where we need so little vetting and so little tweaking of proposals, because that committee is really good at what they do under Tony's leadership. So I want to express thanks for that particular part of Tony's work that doesn't often get recognized. As for Renee, I will share a short story with you. I saw her in the depths of the pandemic, when you'll remember that we had only essential employees here and a few programs, including nursing and paramedic. And she was cleaning, and I saw her one day, and I asked her how she was doing and whether she felt safe. And she said she loved her job and she loved being back, because her job was about making the students feel safe so that they could come back. So someone who recognized the importance of her job at the college and did such an amazing job at it for that many years. And finally, I just want to mention, we're very grateful to A S G and Student Development and Athletics for creating the Loud Crowd, bringing students to our teams. Very happy to have trustees at our homecoming for football. But want to remind everybody that while we do have a very strong state-contending football team, we have an amazing women's soccer team that is currently boasting a record of 13 wins, zero losses, and one tie. They are headed for state or national championships. So come see them, please. They play tomorrow at 3:00, Friday at 3:00, next Tuesday at 3:00. Then they're going to be on the road for a while, and then they'll have one more game at home before we know they're going to be off to regionals and finally states. These are amazing, fierce women. Please come see them. We could not be more proud of what they do. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Dr. Stern. Now I'll turn to what, well, you're not Am Ray. Vice Chancellor Connie Kavanaugh, Business Services, any report?
No report, thanks.
Vice Chancellor McDonald, any report?
No report at this time.
Okay, Vice Chancellor Wiskel.
Yeah, I just want to thank Tony Huntley. He's been my co-chair of the Sabbatical Committee for most of the time I've been here. But he has been co-chairing the Sabbatical Committee way before I arrived and done really great work. So congrats to Tony Huntley, and a congratulations to Renee, District Services. And the Third Floor will miss her very much, so thank you.
Thank you for that. I think that concludes our reports. I will now adjourn the meeting in honor of Saddleback College Colleges, Steve Tuttle, who passed away yesterday from an acute illness. Since 1966, Steve was an instructor in the Saddleback College Computer Information Management Program, where he taught courses in Dreamweaver and WordPress. Steve was the son of Carolyn Gilley, a retired full-time faculty member who- Steve was the son of Carolyn Gilley, a retired full-time faculty member who still teaches part-time, also in the Computer Information Management Program. We know that the Saddleback College community is mourning the loss of Steve, and on behalf of the entire Board of Trustees, we wish peace for Steve's family, friends, and colleagues during this very difficult time. Before we adjourn, I want to note, we are recessing back into closed session, just so everyone knows that, and there is the possibility of, there will not be a report out, but we are recessing back into closed session. Thank you.